Good evening and welcome to the May 9, 2017 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the representative of which is changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll. Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Syam.
Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
At this time, I would like to take a moment to remember a very remarkable woman. Grace Ziken was a lifelong resident of Florissant who passed away on Thursday. Grace was a woman that I admired greatly. I've known her since I was born. Her parents were very good friends of my parents. So she was the wife of the late Don Ziken Senior, a mother of five, a grandma and a great-grandma. Grace was a very active member and a leader of this Florissant community. She always was willing to lend a helping hand when needed. Grace was at every event with the most beautiful smile and the warm embrace. She treated everyone with kindness. Grace will be missed, but she will never be forgotten. So please keep the Ziken family in your thoughts and prayers at this time. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of April 24, 2017 and the workshop minutes of April 17, 2017? Hearing Nun Councilman Jones moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Syam. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Police Week presented by Mayor Schneider. And me?
Whereas we acknowledge 2017 National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Florissant Police Department. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas sadly, over the last decade, an average of 151 officers a year have been killed in the line of duty. And throughout the US history, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas the new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in the spring, including 42 officers killed in 2017 to date and 144 officers killed in the previous year. And whereas May 14 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant and the City Council, do hereby formally designate May 14 through 20, 2017 as National Police Week in the City of Florissant and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. This commendation is presented to Officer Josh Smith. On November 23, 2016, you received a call for an assault first degree at the BP station in the 12,000 block of New Hall's Ferry Road. Upon your arrival, you were contacted by the victim who related that he had been involved in an altercation with a subject who almost struck him with a vehicle while exiting the station lot. The suspect then pulled out a firearm and discharged one shot at the victim, luckily missing him. The suspect sped away. Following your review of the surveillance video and the service station, you obtained an excellent description of the suspect and the vehicle. While seizing some evidence at the scene, you then witnessed the vehicle and the suspect slowing, driving, slowly, slowly driving by the station. You immediately attempted to stop the vehicle, which suddenly fled the scene. After a short chase, you were able to arrest the suspect and recover the firearm. Your subsequent video interview resulted in a full confession. Due to your excellent investigation and observation, you removed a dangerous felon from the streets of Florissant. You are hereby officially commended. The next item we have is the Certificate of Appreciation. The Florissant Police Department wishes to formally acknowledge and thank Sarah Carlson and vested interest K-9 Incorporated, N-K9s Incorporated, for the generous donation of a bullet and stab protective vest for K-9 Hugo and Tyson of the Florissant Police K-9 Unit. Ms. Carlson's personal commitment to host the black, the back in, black and blue barbecue and trivia night resulted in sufficient donations to supply both of these vests to keep our K-9 partners safe and the performance of their duties protecting the citizens of Florissant. Your hard work and tireless efforts are sincerely appreciated. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda are certificates of...
Our certificates of merit presented by Chief Lowry. Officer Freddie Lee, Officer Kimberly Berry, Officer Mark Northridge, and Officer Kayan Jackson, all volunteered to mentor at-risk youth at several elementary schools in an effort to create positive interactions with law enforcement officers. These officers met weekly with the at-risk youth at the different schools. The officers and students were able to discuss conflict resolution, listening skills, setting goals, bullying, team building, and conducted exercises to instill personal confidence. Not only did the officers donate their time, but they also, also their money for snacks and pizza party. The personal commitment of these officers in this program has shown these at-risk youth that Florissant Police Officers care. For your outstanding effort, you are formally awarded the Certificate of Merit.
Next.
Did you want to say anything, or do you want to go right on to Eddie's?
Yeah, I just want to say, we, in behalf of the citizens and the city council, we are so proud of our police department. These individuals exemplify why we're such, one of the best police departments in the nation. We appreciate all the help that we get, all the support we get from organizations like this to support our police officers. And, you know, I just don't have anything higher, much higher praise to say that this is one of the best police departments in the United States. Chief?
I can only echo what the mayor says, and honestly, it's a, it's really an honor and privilege to be the service to police chief, and I've got such excellent officers, so many in the crowd this evening, and it really just shows the commitment that these officers have for our community in the City of Florissant. I really appreciate what they've done. And of course, Sarah, we really appreciate you raising money for our K-9 unit. Obviously, our K-9 unit is very important to our police department. It consists of three regular K-9 units, and of course Eddie, our community service dog, who we're going to have him up here in a minute, but we really appreciate everything you did. And I know that you have a presentation that you would like to give.
Yes, I have a $1,000 check to give to the Florissant Police Explorers. So it was some of the additional money that we raised during the trivia night, we were able to donate back to you guys as well, so.
Jenna, did you want to come and receive that?
Those receiving certificates is Remy Fitzgerald, Caitlin Fitzgerald, Amber Pettibone, Ryan Pettibone, and Ashley Pettibone. These five youths have unselfishly volunteered nearly 70 hours of their time for the St. Ferdinand Basketball Tournament fundraiser. These youths worked very hard by completing any task that was given to them. Their willingness and hard work for the fundraiser made a major impact on the lives of others in need and crisis. These youths expect no compensation, expected no compensation or reward, and volunteered out of the kindness of their hearts to better and help the community.
Mr. Egan would like to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Pagano, thank you. Eddie's Heroes is an award that I believe this is the first time it has ever been given out. In my conversations with Officer Mann, we learned of her desire to recognize individuals in the community that go above and beyond to help out their fellow, their fellow man, their fellow human. When I first heard of it, I could not think of five better candidates for the first recipients of Eddie Heroes. These kids helped us out at the St. Ferdinand barbecue for the last two years. I believe that we're going to be able to announce next year that this barbecue has raised over $80,000 and, up to date, $80,000, and hopefully we're going to break the $100,000 mark next week. These kids are up there all the, all the time, every day for five weeks this last two years. They help set up and tear down, they babysit other children that need babysitting, they take orders. Again, they were there literally the entire time, and I'm very proud to know them and their parents. And I could not think of any five better recipients for the first Eddie Hero Award.
And of course, Eddie has just entered the building, and I think most people in our community know Eddie, and of course Officer Lori Mann, who is Eddie's handler. And I just want to say congratulations to the five young people here, and you guys did an outstanding job, and that's been just an outstanding fundraiser for our community. I want you guys to, I want to tell you guys what you're getting. Obviously, you're getting a certificate with Eddie on, with Eddie on the front of it, signed by myself. You each get, obviously, a medallion. And then the other thing is, is that Culvers is actually teamed with us also, and you get a gift certificate to have dinner at Culvers, and we really appreciate their sponsorship.
Very much appreciative of the St. Ferdinand Parish and Councilman Egan's efforts to make the barbecue, one of the best barbecues during the March Madness basketball season that you could find anywhere. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening, for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period, but if you would like to stay and speak to a council member or the mayor after the meeting, we would be happy to. If you are here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is now announced. The first is Thomas Baird. Good evening, and please state your name and address.
Name's Thomas Baird, 10099A Grandview Garden Court, Marden, 7. Basically, just asking a question to have on the record. It was approximately two years ago, they did work on St. Ferdinand by the creek there. My question is, now they're supposedly replacing the pipes in there, why didn't they do that then?
Thank you. Tim Hess.
My name is Tim Hess. I live at 2310 North Waterford Drive in Florissant, Missouri. I have lived here since 1987. I want to thank Tommy Syam for his time and patience to help during the last year and five months. Basically, what I'm here about is the backup sewer problems. The way it is right now, I can't afford to stay in Florissant. I don't want to leave Florissant, so what do I do? As you know, there have been two sewer backups caused by MSD overcharged mains, Saturday, December 26, 2015, and Sunday, April 30, 2017. But most of you don't know is that with these two backups, there were also two more within a couple of days. Saturday, December 26, 2015, I had eight inches of backup sewer water in my basement. It went down, and on Monday, December 28, I had 14 more inches. This time on Sunday, April 30, I had six inches of backup sewer water in my basement. On Thursday, May 4, I had two more. I love Florissant, I love my backyard, I love the police department, everything about Florissant. I grew up on a farm. I don't want to leave, but I don't know what to do anymore. You know, I have health concerns to where, when we have these floods, I'm on blood thinner, I can't clean up stuff myself if I scratch and get any of that into my system. That could be suicide. You know, I have a neighbor has newborn twins, they just refinished during their basement, and because of this, how can they bring, how, would any of you want to bring your newborn twins home to a home like this? You cannot tell me that the air that we breathe because of these sewer backups is unhealthy. You know, every time I have a backup sewer, I have to take off work without pay. I, I can't take it off as sick time, and I refuse to use it as vacation time. The little piddly amount of money that MSD wants to give us every time this happens, it doesn't pay for half of this stuff. It doesn't even pay for half of what I had just to have a sewer pro come and just dry out my basement. I still have the dust and all the nasty mess and everything else that needs to be cleaned up. Either I do it myself, or I go hire somebody else. You know, this, like I said, I've been living here for 30 years, and the great flood of 93, the flood of 95, was never any problems. I, I just think that, you know, they should be held responsible, they need to find out where the problem is and take care of it. You can't tell me that because of all the new businesses that have developed in Florissant...
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
You know they have good sewer lines.
Mr. Hess, thank you. Ingrid Noble. Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Ingrid Niebel, 2660 North Waterford Drive. I am a two-time breast cancer survivor, breast cancer survivor. I have put up with chemo, and the three times my basement has flooded has turned me from a victor into wanting to know, how is this problem going to be solved? I dealt with it in December of 2015, and in April, and again in May, four days later of 2017, with family members helping me and my neighbor pumping out water. Now, each time, it seemed that it was more clear water with some silt in it. However, May 4 was quite interesting, because it had just backed up four or five days before that, and I thought I was in the clear. My carpet had been dragged out to the street a second time, which is still sitting out there for junk people to come by, and I've had people knock on my door, and I've had people take junk from that pile of things. And on May 4, the last time I had used the bathroom was May 3 at 11:00 PM. On Thursday, May 4 at 6:00 AM, when my basement started flooding, I had someone else's toilet paper, someone else's wad of electrical tape, and a bunch of soil and gravel, and the gravel, I think, came from different people's roof shingles. So I'm certain that this was rainwater and sewage mixed together. And I don't know how anybody else feels, but when I'm using those pumps and my neighbor had come over, we had two pumps going, he stuffed a towel down my drain to try and stop it. I was pumping sewage water into my backyard. So perhaps what we need along North Waterford are Johnny-on-the-spots in our backyard, so that the next time that this happens, we will at least have a place to go to the bathroom instead of me trying to run the QuickTrip, or Starbucks, or some other place. I can't even wash my hands in my home if I touch anything that's in, that's bad. So I would appreciate some way to solve this problem so that I don't have to feel like I've become someone else's outhouse. And also, the next time that this would happen, I'm hoping that everyone who doesn't have a flooded basement remembers that when you flush your toilet, when you put things down your garbage disposal, or use your sink, or empty your tub, that all that water is not going probably to MSD's sewage treatment plants, but rather, it is coming into our basements and we've become your sewage repository. So please consider that the next time there is a very serious flood, that maybe you would have to back off using what you're doing in your home too, to help preserve our homes. But after living here for 27 years, I'm not sure how I can handle this anymore. And I wonder if this was Chesterfield, or if this was Creve Court, or if this was Town and Country, would this be handled differently? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Tom Tricamo. My address is 3025 Parker Road. Okay, I want to thank you all for your time. I know that you're very busy people, obviously have a lot going on. I provided each one of you copies of the documentation I brought. One thing is the flyer my wife and I are sending out to all of our neighbors in Paddock Hills. The next two things, the pictures of the sewer mains completely overcharged with sewage water. And the next two items are the $2,900 claim payment that MSD gave us in 2015, and then the document that they sent almost immediately after the flood this year. As many of you know, several homes in the Paddock Hills area experienced sewer backups starting Sunday, April 30. For many, even those that have owned these homes, obviously, you've heard from most of them, have owned these homes in that area for numerous decades, and through many catastrophic flood events, this was the second time sewers have backed up into their homes, into our homes. Unfortunately, the first time their sewers backed up was a mere 17 months ago. Almost immediately and without any provocation, several of the homeowners in that area received phone calls from MSD offering them a $2,900 claim for the flooding. Of course, this paperwork that is to be signed to get the $2,900 is cleverly written by the MSD lawyers. This paperwork states that while this issue isn't the fault of MSD, they're happy to extend their customers $2,900, but the customers will first have to sign a declaration of indemnification for MSD. The $2,900 is literally hush money. MSD is clearly responsible for this issue. They would allow this, that they would allow this issue to continue to perpetuate is completely unacceptable. Furthermore, most times, the $2,900 is woefully inadequate for the damage that occurred to people's homes and their insurance providers are threatening to drop them. MSD sewer system is completely antiquated. Its clay eight-inch diameter main is inadequate to handle the demand placed upon it. We are asking you, as our elected officials, to hold MSD accountable and fix this issue. Your citizens demand your help, your community, our property values, and most importantly, the health of our families, the health of my two children, ages six and four, the health of my wife, is at stake. We are relying upon you to force MSD to do something about this issue. Ask yourself, would this have happened in Chesterfield, Frontenac, Ladue, in this discrimination? Stand up for your citizens, hold MSD accountable for their inaction, and show them that we will not be bought for $2,900. Thank you again, please help us.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Amy Tricamo. I'm at 3025 Parker Road. My family has been proud residents of Florissant for the better part of a decade. My husband was born and raised in Florissant, and we've continued that tradition with our sons. We participate in community events, we care for our neighbors, and we vote on critical local issues. We are vested and we are committed to Florissant. My husband and I have created a very lovely home for our boys to grow up in and make beautiful memories in. The recent sewer backups have put more than a damper on our experience in our home, but also in Florissant. We do not see this as an issue that will go away, but one that will increase incrementally to eventually devastate our neighborhood. I truly hope that no one here has experienced a sewer backup. But in the event that you have, I'm sure you have compassion for our situation, and for compassion for us feeling helpless to do anything. We are in an interesting juxtaposition. We want to remain dedicated to our community, but our sewer system is failing us. Our homes are no longer safe. And most importantly, we don't have a choice in sewage removal. MSD holds a monopoly on this utility, and they are inadequately serving the population of Florissant. I would have to ask what you would do in my situation. I need, we need, your help. While I certainly understand the complexity of this situation, it is my hope that you understand the nightmare this is for the residents of Florissant, for our community, for the health of our residents, and for the commitment you have promised your constituents. I am not asking for your sympathy, I don't need it. I'm asking for your action now.
Thank you. Chris Mattson.
He had to leave.
Oh, alright. Robert Smith.
Hey, can I, can I say just a couple words for him?
Would you like to fill out a speaker card?
I hear you talking.
Oh, you already talked.
I just spoke already, but I know what...
Well, that's, that's okay. Just, so, Mr. Smith?
Okay, he just got finished redoing his basement last week.
Okay.
And then this all came up again.
Alright, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Name is Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive. I came up a couple weeks ago and asked about the street repairs for a progress, and I got the Florissant Focus from Councilman Egan, and I know it's spending $3.3 million on street repairs, and the one thing that I wanted to ask, well, that I did ask, but I didn't get, was with all that being spent, there is still is no list of the streets that will be repaired this year?
We do, there are lists, and if you... And if you just wait just a minute, I'm going to suspend the rules because I think this is a great time for Mr. Gerald to come up and we'll talk about the MSD and maybe he can address your question on the streets. How's that? Mr. Gerald? I don't know which one you want to tackle first, either Mr. Smith on the street?
Well, I apologize, I don't have a list of the streets with me. But we did put together a list. If I can get your name and phone number, I'll let you know what's happening. I can get you a copy of that list.
It's not mine, officer.
Okay. That'd be good, yeah, that's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
But in reference to the Paddock Hills Coalition, the sewer problems and comments by the Paddock Hills Coalition, folks in and around the various Paddock Hills subdivisions, I think there's 17 of them, and several other areas in the city are being documented and detailed by the city with the intent to meet with MSD officials, to make sure that they fully understand all our problems and concerns, and to make sure that MSD takes steps, the appropriate steps, to resolve these issues. We want to hear from all the residents about their specific problems, concerns, issues, and experiences, but it's more important that MSD hears directly from them because they document it in a certain way. So please understand that we sincerely consider their sewer problems and concerns our sewer problems and concerns. We want what they want. We want MSD to research, design, and develop long-term solutions to our sewer problems. With this in mind, again, it's imperative that all Florissant residents call MSD immediately when the problem occurs so MSD can properly document the specific problems and so that they can clearly identify the specific areas of their sewer system that are high priority and need improvements now rather than later. So please don't hesitate to call. We give out their numbers in a number of publications. Their number at MSD is area code 314-769-6260. Also, call the city engineer's office, Tom Goldcamp. In fact, Tom's with us tonight. He's standing at the door over there, the tall guy. We also want to know about your problems so that we can clearly identify with MSD what the concerns are. You know, we live here, we work here, and we have a little bit more of a vested interest in explaining things to MSD in a more colloquial manner. So if at all possible, make sure Tom hears about your concerns. And please know that, that we cannot pass on that information to MSD. It has to come from the residents and the businesses that are concerned. But to be fair, MSD has not ignored our problems. MSD currently, excuse me, MSD currently has $39,265,000 in 13 various projects in and around the city of Florissant, either in design or construction. That will directly affect our residences and businesses. MSD is one of our best corporate partners as far as any of the other utilities are concerned. They spend millions of dollars each year in the city of Florissant, either on storm water or sanitary sewer issues. It would be really unfair to expect MSD to design, build, or improve their system to handle any and all future events. Mayor Schneider, Tom Goldcamp, and I have developed a close relationship with MSD over the years, which affords us some privileges other cities don't have. MSD has offered several meeting dates and we're in the process of nailing down those exact dates and times to meet with them. MSD has not ignored our sewer issues either, now or in the past, where they've continued to work on resolving these issues. Mayor Schneider and I have been collaborating for over 35 years with MSD and these issues, as in our city, are the same in other cities throughout MSD's district. They are complicated, costly, and they can't be resolved overnight. Nonetheless, MSD has not shown us any lack of commitment or resolve in making and working with us to address these issues. However, I hope you realize that many areas outside the city of Florissant are experiencing the same and more serious issues than we have. MSD serves an area of about 525 square miles in size, 1.3 million people, and over 7,000 miles of sewers and mains. Some of these areas have much worse problems than we have, and all of these problems are hitting MSD at the same time. Mayor Schneider is quite correct in stating that to resolve all area problems would take billions of dollars and many, many years. MSD has some good engineers, but they also have some tremendous challenges. They have the unenviable task of prioritizing projects to the funds available and the urgencies dictated. Design criterias have changed when local subdivisions were first built, and federal mandates have increased demands over and above their resources available. I have called and talked with Brian Holzer, he's the executive director and CEO of MSD, and invited him to have a representative, either he or have a representative here tonight. And they would love to have been here face-to-face, but I gave them such short notice, my fault. So they do apologize for not being here, but again, they're glad to meet with the mayor and us. But be assured that Mayor Schneider, Tom Goldcamp, and I are committed to working with MSD and they with us to resolve these sewer issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I have one.
You have, okay. If we're going to open this, would you like to come up?
I'll ask this as respectfully as possible, to make sure everyone can hear. I appreciate what you just said. What now is the actionable plan for MSD? Nothing.
Excuse me, can we let, can, excuse me?
Certainly appreciate the work you've done.
Please let him answer the question.
The question was, what's, what now is the actionable plan? And the plan is, to meet with MSD, we're developing a map locating all our problems from the residents, and they are also developing a map on all these locations. Hopefully, those maps are going to be the same. And we're going to meet with them and talk to them about, you know, what specifically we can do in these areas. Like I said, they've got over $39 million worth of projects, and a lot of them are going to affect, when they are done, they are going to affect the sanitary and sewer issues in Florissant, but we also want to get reassurance on the specific areas that they know exactly what our problems are and what they're going to do. And then we can get back to you. But to say tonight that I've got an exact answer, I don't. I just know that me and the mayor and Tom, we're all engineers, and we're going to meet with MSD and their engineers, and we are going to develop that plan.
Can I ask you?
Please wait just a minute. Mayor?
These meetings, this council meeting is really not designed to, for this kind of a dialogue. We will schedule a meeting in the near future. We're going to have a meeting with MSD. We're going to use all this information that you've brought to us tonight and any other information that you want to share with us. Mr. Gerald will remain here to talk with any of you individuals that would like to give him your input, give him your suggestions, give him a report of your damage and so forth. We will take all the information that we've received at this hearing from citizens and share it with MSD, just with all the other information that we already have and all the other information MSD has. We will, will be discussing all these with MSD, trying to prioritize your, the areas in our city that are most affected. There are projects in the works already. I'm not sure exactly where those projects are in the next year, next two years. Mr. Gerald can, can map those for you and let you know what projects are on the horizon that could address these issues, these current issues that you're having. So we're going to do the best that we can to represent you, to the MSD can give as much priority to us as we can. We've been successful over the last 35 years in getting probably higher priority for Florissant than other communities have gotten. We're not the only ones that have problems. These problems exist throughout the whole St. Louis County area. They're very severe in University City and some other locations as well. So after the meeting, if you'll see Mr. Gerald and Mr. Goldcamp, or during the meeting, if you want to see them out in the hallway, we can address this. But this council meeting, we have business on the agenda. This is not to set up for this type of dialogue.
Right. Before you say that, though, we did open the door, and I'm going to take these two gentlemen and then the rest, if you'll just wait till after the meeting. Sir, on my left, Mr. Hess, correct?
I would like to know, somebody from the city's got to be able to find out where this main that it keep getting overcharged is located. I mean, that should be something that they should be able to suppose to all of us, so we know exactly where it's at. If you know exactly where it's at, maybe also give us some ideas, an opportunity to work with, they have worked with, do they try to rectify the problem?
Okay. Sir?
This year's flood backup, the 15th backup. Let's go back two other times before that, that mine has backed up. I've lived in my north waters since 2000. I've dealt with the big hailstorm. I've dealt with the two flood orders, these two. I ended up having to get a back flat put on my ladder. You won't have any more problems. 2015, I had backup. They said if I didn't have this backup put in, I couldn't file any more claims. I called, I said, where's my money? Oh, your flaps working, you don't get none. The same thing this time. They supposedly came out on the 5th at 2:00 AM in the morning, which is a lie. They came out on the 6th at 2:00 AM in the morning because I was sitting in my living room watching a truck sitting out there. Sorry we missed you on the 5th at 2:00 AM in the morning.
Okay.
People were sleeping. So they think I might answer the door at 2:00 in the morning? If they do, it's probably a dunk.
Alright, well, thank you.
I want to know what the city of Florissant is going to do about getting this done because I'm tired of it.
Thank you, and we are...
They will just blow us off.
Mr. Jones?
Everybody knows that I'm pretty hands-on in my ward, and I'm in Ward 2. I've been in these backyards, you guys, I've seen the flood problems, I've been in the basements when they've been flooded. I've also jumped in a truck with MSD and went and looked as they shove cameras up all these mains to see which ones are clogged and not clogged. I have also worked with our mayor, with our plumber that works for our city under contract, and we've also sent cameras up the other way that MSD does not own, the homeowner owns. So we are working on something, you guys, and when I sent myself to do something, everybody knows I'm pretty good at my task. So I am pressing on the mayor and the management, and the council's fully aware of everything that's going on. So the meetings will take place, you guys can bet on that, and I'm going to keep pushing until they're done. But we are going to find a solution, you guys, don't think that we're not. I'm not the kind of person that forgets where I come from. I am voted in by you people. I don't work for this city, I work for you people, and I don't forget that. So when problems happen, I'm part of the problem out there trying to get it fixed, you guys, so don't think we're not doing nothing because we are. Thanks.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communication of which there are none. We will move to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1705013.
In accordance with Section 405310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers, 9:55 Rue Saint-François, on Tuesday, May 9, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to True Dreams Banquet and Rental Space LLC, DBA True Dreams and Banquet and Rental Space, to allow for the banquet hall for the property located at 47 Florissant Oaks Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard and will special needs contact city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you. Is a petitioner present? Good evening. Are you going to need the overhead projector?
No, I can just go through real quick.
No? Okay.
My name is Kevin Jefferson.
I'm Lisa Jefferson.
I see they got Jackson on here, so they, they might have to change that. Anyway, me and my wife, we've been in this banquet and rental facility, establishing it for over 33 years, but we've been working for other people, so we just ready to open up our own. We live out here in Florissant, 2240 Cotton Tail Drive, Florissant, Missouri. We love this community, so we wanted to open up something where we live. We've been talking to everyone we need to talk to for Florissant to abide by all the rules and regulations, which we have no problem with doing. We hired a licensed architect, they got the seal and everything on it, so when we get ready to pull permits and everything, we got all the proper work, proper details, excuse me, on exactly how everything is going to be done in the building. Now, as far as the banquet hall and rental space, we just going to cater to weddings, receptions, graduation, business meetings. It's not going to be ran like a club or anything, so when there's nothing booked, it will be closed, so it won't just be open for trying to run a club. For our events, we do want to have a licensed officer on duty, so we want, we just want to do everything correctly. We want to police the area after each event. We're going to also have a trash can throughout the building on the inside. We also want to have one on the outside. Just basically, just, we're ready to open up our own banquet facility, and we would love to do it out here in Florissant.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
It is in my ward. I have went up there and met with them, walked through the facility. I just told them what we expect out of new businesses. We, we hope they are very successful. That shopping center's starting to fill up, we want you guys to succeed. But we are starting to start poking around on them trash cans. We're wanting them in and outside them doors so the trash don't go in that parking lot and make it look, you know, any worse than it already is.
Yes, sir.
So I am thumbs up for your guys' business, and I hope you guys succeed. You'll see me come by quite a bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Jefferson, do you, what do you expect to be your, your normal working hours? I know you say you do it according to events, but what are your normal working hours?
The normal business hours would be from 9:00 to 1:30. And of course, we'll have everybody out of the building, we'll make last call about 1:00 or so. I think that that's normally how they do it, so we'll definitely make sure that everybody's out of the building at the proper time. So if it's 1:00, we'll make sure they're out at 1:00. If it's 1:30, we'll make sure everybody out by 1:30. So we just put on the paper, we just put from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 1:00, because we wasn't sure if it was 1:00 or 1:30. But whichever one it is, we have no problem with a buy-in by it.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Joseph?
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Mr. Jefferson, how you doing?
How you doing?
Thanks for picking Florissant. You mentioned about having a licensed security officer at your events or whatever. The chief is sitting right behind you, and I know his guys are always looking for possible secondary work. Would you please speak to him about that and just, you know, see what, what you possibly could work out? That would be great.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm always looking out for our, we have limited secondary opportunities in our city, but when one comes along like this, I'm glad that you mentioned that, so I appreciate that, and I'm sure the chief would like to talk to you about that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention to the council that me and him openly discussed about the alcohol, that the alcohol will be there when places rented or weddings happen or something like that, but when there's nothing happening, we will not use that as a bar up there.
Exactly.
So it's for receptions and stuff only, no alcohol until the next one. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hankey?
Yes, did I hear wrong? Is it Jackson?
No, it's Jefferson. They just got Jackson on there, but it's Jefferson.
That's why, that's why I asked the question. Also noticed there will be no cooking on premises, all be catered.
Exactly. It'd be all catered by licensed caterers.
Okay, nothing, nothing unsanely.
No cooking, no, none of that on the premises.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Caputo?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I, I too have a banquet center in Ward 4, and my biggest complaint that I have had is from the residents, is from noise, you know, especially after hours. And I know you do back up to a residential area, you know, the back of your place. That would be my biggest concern, so I mean, just, I'm just kind of letting you guys know.
Yes.
You know, kind of keep that under and be, be conscious of the noise and, because it, it happens a lot.
Yes, sir.
And will there be like live bands or DJs only, or?
It just, each event will be different, like a wedding, if they want to have a live band or something like that. Before your, your music, I've got to mention that, I did on the last meeting. Everybody that comes in to rent our facility, they can bring their own DJ or whatever, but they have to use our equipment because I have a bar to where the music can't, no matter what they do, it can only go to a certain level. So what I do is before each event, because I've been doing this for a while, I set the level, I go outside, I walk around to make sure that the correct level, lock it down, no matter what happens, it can't go any higher. So I meant, I should have mentioned... So I should have mentioned that.
All right, good, because that was my, that's the biggest complaint that I have of the banquet center, is the noise.
Yes, sir.
So just kind of be conscious of that when you do have your events.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none. Oh, I do. Oh, Mr. Loon would like to speak. Here we go.
Just wanted to mention one thing about the noise. Their suggested motion staff prepared did include that there is a rear door, that the rear door be fitted with panic hardware because of the people load, but also a closer with alarm device should it be opened, so that, and we, planning and zoning covered the issue of trying to keep the back door closed, because we've had other locations where that occurs, so the door is intended to be closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Councilman Jones moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is old business. We'll move to second readings. Bill number 9274. Well, let's move for that. Councilman Sayem moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to First Collinsville Bank to allow for a monument sign for the property located at 14040 New Halls Ferry Road.
Councilman Sayem moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in, aye? Discussion?
My name is Kevin Stein from the bank. You received a packet, I know we were here last time, where we wanted our sign located in the middle of the property along New Halls Ferry Road, and there was a suggestion made that perhaps we can move it to what I'll call the northwest corner of the property. We spoke with our engineer, our architect, and we were, he was able to come up with a way that we could put it there and only lose one parking place.
Top left. Top left. Top, no, over on the bottom.
On the surface. It'll take a second.
Oh, now it's on your right. The way he was standing, it was on his left. Well, the way he was standing, it was on his left.
So originally, we were going to put our, we wanted to put our sign in this spot. It was suggested that perhaps we could move it over to this corner. We spoke with our engineer. We were able to do that by changing the design of the sign a little bit more of like a post sign, and only lose one parking place, and just a couple of, I guess, distances. The location of the base would be 19 and 1/2 feet from the property line, and it would be 69 feet from the center of New Halls Ferry. We are hoping that these changes would satisfy the council, and I'll answer any questions that any of you may have.
Okay, nothing? Councilman Sayem moves for the third reading.
Madam President-
I'm sorry. This amended. I'm sorry.
Going to consider that, you're going to have to amend the bill to make it abundantly clear that we now have what I'm going to characterize as a revised site plan. So if, in fact, the city council wants to consider this location, you'd have to amend Section 1 of the ordinance, which now reads, "A special permit is hereby granted to the First Collinsville Bank for the property located at 14040 New Halls Ferry Road to allow for a ground sign in a B2 zoning district, subject to conditions set forth below." But you'd have to change it to allow for a ground sign in a B3 zoning district at the location identified on the revised site plan received May 9, 2017, subject to the conditions set forth below, the conditions being part of the record, and then those conditions are set out.
All right.
So you would have to amend the legislation to make sure that that's the location, that you want the ground sign to be located.
Mr. Sayem, you want to make that motion? Yes, seconded by Mr. Hanky, to amend the sign location.
If I may, before that's called, and I don't know if this matters, but we didn't only move the location, we also changed a little bit the style of the sign. I don't know if that's important for purposes of this or not. It was a monument sign before, now it's more of a post sign.
Right, it is a post.
I don't have a vote, so it's not, because I think it's important for the city council to make sure that the sign that you want is what they're approving.
Right.
Or better put, their approval of a sign is in accordance with documents that the staff can subsequently then refer to.
Okay. And this is also part of the packet that we submitted last week, the new sign, so I guess I would ask for approval of the new style of sign, as well as the new location of the sign.
Okay, hold on. Now we have some discussion going.
Okay.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes, thank you for all your efforts on this. You've done exactly what we asked you to do. You've moved the sign, you've moved it back because of the field of view where the sign was, that's why I second Mr. Sayem's motion, because he did exactly what we've been asking him to do, so.
If the council, if I may, if the council wants to then authorize the installation of the sign that was just depicted to them, then the amendment should read, "To allow for a ground sign in a B3 zoning district at the location identified on the revised site plan received May 9, 2017, and in accordance with the drawing of the sign received May 9, 2017."
Okay, well, the-
It's the best I can do in the fly.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Hessel, please verify, this does not need to go back to planning and zoning, correct?
Correct.
Very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. I was fine with the sign before. I mean-
All in favor of Mr. Caputa's motion?
Yeah, we have a lot of them.
I know, last meeting when you were here, I mean, I didn't see no problem. You had the right variance, the feet-wise, I mean, you had it set up. I was fine with the sign before, the monument sign. But now you come up with this sign, I mean, is it going to take, you said one parking spot? You had to raise, make the sign taller, correct?
Yes.
Because of your landscaping with a-
The landscaping and the fact that by making it taller, we would only lose one parking spot, because we could use a smaller base.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, like I said, I was fine with the sign before, but, you know, now it's totally different. I mean, you got a taller sign, which is fine. I mean, but I'm just expressing my opinion. I'm just one person. Thank you.
So let me, oh. Mr. Parsons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have one question along with the same lines that Mr. Caputa was asking. You changed the sign and made it taller, was that because it's more visible this way, as opposed to a monument sign? Was that one of the reasons?
That's part of it, but the other part was, by doing it this way, we only lose one parking space. If we would have kept the same sign design we had before, we would have lost two parking spaces.
Lost two, okay.
Yes.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
All right. So let me ask you, what do I do with the first amended one that I had a second on? Now I have to reamend again for this?
Mr. Sayem can withdraw the, under Robert's rule of order, he can withdraw his amendment.
Okay.
Then Mr. Hanky would withdraw his second.
All right.
And you can follow that up with a new amendment and look for a second to that, which would reference the location on the revised site plan, as well as the newly drawn sign on, that was depicted on the draw.
Yeah, that's fine, I withdraw my motion.
That's what you're doing, withdrawing? Okay. Mr. Sayem makes the motion to withdraw, seconded by Mr. Hanky.
And that doesn't take a vote, because they made a motion, they can withdraw.
All right.
So now, if someone would like to make a motion to amend Section 1 to include the following language after the words "B3 zoning district," "At the location identified on the revised site plan received May 9, 2017, and in accordance with the drawing of the sign received May 9, 2017."
Mr. Sayem has given me a thumbs up, that he likes your wording there. And Mr. Hanky's going to second that amendment for that revised plan. All right. Now we have an all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
We're still going, boys. All right. You're welcome to sit.
Okay.
And then we'll square this.
I do want to thank the council for working with us on this. I know there were issues related to the sign, and I appreciate the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you need, I say, a motion for a third reading of the bill as amended.
The third reading? So not the second, okay. Mr. Sayem makes a motion for a third reading.
Of the bill as amended.
For the bill as amended, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to First Collinsville Bank to allow for a monument sign for the property located at 14040 New Halls Ferry Road.
Okay, and, I lost the train. If anyone would like to speak on this public hearing, please come. Third reading? Oh, geez, morning. I'm sorry.
We threw it completely off.
It is, it's just, I feel more sorry for the bank, but. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please call the poll, poll the council for the final vote.
There you go. Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem? Lee is absent. Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Bill number 9274 passes and becomes ordinance number 8315. Bill number 9276. Councilman Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize amendment to B5 ordinance number 7998 to allow for an ice machine kiosk in the parking lot for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road.
Councilman Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize amendment to B5 ordinance number 7998 to allow for an ice machine kiosk in the parking lot for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Bill number 9276 passes and becomes ordinance number 8316. Bill number 9278. 16, yes. I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Childress. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $4,000 from account number 0339 Ice and Snow Removal to account number 0334 Street Markings to replace the 134 banners on North Lindbergh and North Highway 67 with new banners.
Councilman Childress moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $4,000 from account number 0339 Ice and Snow Removal to account number 0334 Street Markings to replace the 134 banners on North Lindbergh and North Highway 67 with new banners.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Bill number 9278 passes and becomes ordinance number 8317. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have board appointments. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I would like to appoint Matthew Gramwich to the Citizen Participation Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The appointment has been made.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to appoint Mr. Ben Hammond from Ward Four to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Mr. Egan makes motion to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The appointment is made. Next, we have a request. Councilman Egan moves to approve the request to keep three ducks for Joseph Anderson located at 10 Lincoln Drive, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. Councilman Jones moves to approve a full liquor by the drink license for True Dreams Banquet and Rental Space, LLC, located at 47 Floris and Oak Shopping Center, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
The liquor license is approved. Next, we have Councilman Parsons moves to accept the application for a transfer of a special use permit number 8225 from Colf LLC to Parsons Convenience Stores, Inc., for the operation of a convenience store, filling station, and existing sign located at 12785 New Halls Ferry Road, seconded by Mr. Childress. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Councilman Parsons now moves to approve beer and wine package liquor license for Parsons Convenience Stores, Inc., for the operation of a convenience store, filling station, and existing sign. Pardon me?
Just a full beer and wine.
For a full beer and wine package liquor license. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
For a full beer and wine package liquor license, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Tsaiyan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
The liquor license is approved. Bills for first reading, bill number 9279.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to True Dreams Banquet and Rental Space to allow for the banquet hall for the property located at 47 floors and Oak Shopping Center.
Bill number 9280.
Ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $3,571 to account number 4010 salaries and $273 to account number 4013 employee benefits for a part-time city hall cashier for an interim period of eight weeks.
Bill number 9281.
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance number 8059, 8212, and 7760, and all ordinance in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classifications for full-time uniformed employees, and to amend the code section 125.065, wage increase and schedule pertaining to uniformed employees, and enacting lieu thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject and containing an effective date clause.
Councilman Childress moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? Mr. Egan.
Thank you, Madam President. There's been an assault on the American police officer for the past four years. For the first time in the history of this country, men and women are not flocking to join the ranks of law enforcement officers. This past spring, the voters in St. Louis County took a significant step in protecting themselves, as well as the officers that protect our communities, by approving Proposition P. SLAPCA is the St. Louis Area Chiefs of Police Association, and in my 10 years of serving as a president of my own police officers association, I found them to be the definitive organization on police pay and benefits. The only discrepancies I've ever found with SLAPCA have been essentially when the fiscal year begins, as some begin in November, December, as we do in Florissant, some in January, and some in July. The Florissant Police Department is one of the largest police departments by manpower in the entire St. Louis region. The 2016 SLAPCA survey shows that the Florissant police officers start off at number 18 in pay in the region. The same survey indicates that top wage for a patrol officer is also number 18 in the St. Louis region. Our officers used to be in the top five, and then they fell to the top 10, and now they've fallen out of the top 15. Proposition P requires that funds must be allocated towards the use of public safety. This bill would provide an 8% raise across the board for all sworn and uniformed personnel in the Florissant Police Department. It also calls for separating the police officers and the non-uniformed, or the uniformed non-sworn personnel from the city's pay matrix. This is very important, as the funds from Prop P have to be allocated and justified. This bill also makes all officers above, the rank captain and above, salaried employees, sorry captains. I will be moving for three readings this evening. Mr. Childress already has moved for a second reading, thank you, sir. Three readings is generally used for emergency situations. After speaking with the chief and many of our officers, I feel justified in expediting this piece of legislation. We know that we have police officers who are on the bubble regarding their careers. Officers throughout St. Louis County are lining up to join other agencies and jurisdictions like St. Louis County. Some of these officers are from departments that actually pay more than St. Louis County does now. Law enforcement officers have always been told, "We'll look at this tomorrow." Well, folks, most of the time, tomorrow never comes. Pitfalls and glitches arise, which inevitably make tomorrow a pipe dream. By approving this legislation tonight, we send a clear-cut message to our police officers. We want you here. We have year six. Our goal in the city of Florissant is to recruit, hire, and retain the very best people to police and protect us. This legislation is a significant step in reaching that goal. There were many naysayers in Prop P. This legislation sends a clear message to them, to the community, that this council intends to use the money as it was intended, as the voters intended us to. This pay raise will cost us approximately 3/4 of a million dollars, $750,000. The council has already given the chief his marching orders to explore other needs such as retirements, benefits, retirement benefits, training, and equipment for the officers. By enacting this ordinance tonight, the city of Florissant is also sending a message to the other communities. Follow our lead. Next week is National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Month. May 15th is the day that President Kennedy has set aside to honor those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. I can see no better way to show our support to our officers than to pass this legislation as we enter the most sacred of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'd like to thank the chief and his command staff. The chief and I were among the first to oppose a czar for police standards. We were also the first to support the county executive's initiative for Proposition P. I believe Florissant supported this more than any other community in St. Louis County, and our leadership is going to reflect and shine for the whole county and make this, the whole county, a safer place for each individual to live, work, and play. So we're proud of our participation in Proposition P, and one of the first things that we did was to ask our command staff to come up with a recommendation for the council to consider right away to show our officers that we're committed to using this money for public safety and to raise the bar for our officers and hopefully other officers throughout the county. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Egan. That was very well said. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance number 8059, 8212, and 7760, and all ordinances in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time uniformed employees, and to amend code section 125065, wage increase and schedule pertaining to uniformed employees, and enacting lieu thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject and containing an effective date clause.
Councilman Childress moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hankey?
Who are you?
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Tsaiyan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Ordinance to repeal selected sections of ordinance numbers 8059, 8212, and 7760, and all ordinances in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time uniformed employees, and to amend code section 125065, wage increase and schedule pertaining to uniformed employees, and enacting lieu thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject and containing an effective date clause. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Hankey?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Tsaiyan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Well deserved. Happy. Thank you all. Before we get too excited, let me give it a number. Bill number 9281 passes and becomes ordinance number 8318, and thank you again. Bill number 9282.
Ordinance to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 8255 from Colfi LLC to Parsons Convenience Store, Incorporated, for the operation of convenience store, filling station, and existing sign location at 12785 New Halls Ferry Road.
The next item on the agenda is council announcements. I'm going to go first. So first, I'd like to thank everyone for what a fabulous weekend, police department, residents, council, everyone who was there, and kudos to Mr. Parsons, because we couldn't ask for better weather. So, but it was a huge success to that. The committee chairperson, which was Laurie Lowry, how they all get together and do this is beyond me without losing it, and she remains calm and good, and it's just a beautiful event, so thank you all. And next, as you know, June is coming, and we normally have our ward barbecue. This year, we've decided to expand it to a citywide barbecue. It will be held on June 14th. The time has not been, like, set in stone yet, but it will probably start at 6:00. It will be held at the James J. Egan Center, because just in the event of rain that we've had for the past four years, we will be able to put it undercover. So, the ice rink, yes, I'm sorry. So please be looking for a yellow card in your mailbox. We are really looking forward to this and hope that everyone can attend. So we'll start with Mr. Hankey.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would just want to piggyback on what you said about the Valley of Flowers weekend. It was exceptional. I want to thank all the people of Florissant that spruced up, cleaned up, put on our best foot forward. It was important that we put our best foot forward for the people that came in. The city employees tirelessly all weekend long, cleaned up after the Valley of Flowers, seemed almost instantly, it was cleaned up the next day. That's the city employees, and most importantly, our police department. The guys, the job you guys had over the weekend was unenviable. You did it once again professionally. You did it, we're going to keep the Valley of Flowers the way it should be, the family community event that it's always been, and we count on you guys to do what you did, and you did it again. Also, another note, completely different, Sacred Heart School picnic is tomorrow. You're all invited to Sacred Heart School picnic tomorrow. Those, a lot of you around here that live in this ward and in the area, that's kind of like going back to your roots, a lot of the alumni of Sacred Heart come back for the picnic. Everybody's invited. It's right down the street here on St. Louis. And also, the food drive. This weekend is the 25th Annual Letter Carriers Food Drive. Put out non-perishable kid, goes our, non-perishable food, any kind of food, out at your mailbox. The letter carrier will do the rest. We've got gangs out there where they'll pick them all up. All the food collected in the Florissant delivery area, which covers all of Florissant and St. Louis County in this area, out to Blackjack, out to 367, goes to our team food pantry, which is down the street here. You'll see it on the sign boards throughout the city, but remember, this Saturday, letter carrier food drive, put some food out in a bag for your letter carrier. Letter carrier will pick them up, and it benefits our local food pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Parsons, thank you for the great weather at the Valley of Flowers. We're betting a thousand, and your next task is the Fall Festival. I would like to thank the Valley of Flowers Committee, congratulations to the new queen in her court, and to the outgoing queen in court. Contractor for MSD has just started a project on Graham Road as you cross the bridge driving south. Hopefully, with good weather, the one lane that's closed will be only for about six weeks. Please be patient during rush hour and when you're driving on Graham Road. I would like to offer my condolences to the Zeichen family on their loss of their mother, Grace Zeichen. She was a very active member of our community for many, many years. Grace was a great ambassador for Florissant and North County, and she will be missed. I would like to wish Marvin Overe, the unofficial mayor of Lowry Estates, a happy 90th birthday. He's one of my older residents in my ward. And finally, Bob Bevo Gainer, one of the founders of The Locker Room, passed away on April 25th. He was 79 years old. He and his late wife Marilyn opened The Locker Room in 1979 and owned it for 21 years. They were very active in the community, sponsoring numerous teams, trips to spring training, ski trips to Colorado, and at one time, they sponsored 14 softball teams, two basketball teams, and three indoor soccer teams, all in the same timeframe. Bob is going to be missed, and I just wanted to mention him tonight. A lot of people in Florissant remember Bob. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to remind everybody about team down the streets, our food pantry. There's somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. If anybody's got some extra change, some extra canned goods, please run them down there. I'd also like to remind everybody on hotter shelves, the construction's still going a little bit longer, and we're going to jump to the other side. Please have patience, be careful. There's construction workers out there, we don't want nobody getting killed. I'd also like to give a shout out to the police department. My blind lady up on Lindsey Lane has called me this morning, and she said she does not hear the cars going as fast up and down the street, that she'll keep her ear to the driveway and let me know if it continues. So shout out to that lady. I'd also like to keep my residents, keep the emails, phone calls coming, the more active I am, you know, the more feedback I get, the more active I can, and we are going to tackle this MSD thing. I brought it up earlier, you guys, I got very involved in that. We have a lot of seniors that have lost their hot water heaters, furnaces, that have no money, and I do see it. I understand that, the whole council does, so just don't think we're ignoring it, you guys. It just takes a little bit of time to get these meetings going, but we are going to tackle that, and hopefully we can come up with something productive on both sides of MSD and Florissant to help the residents. So I don't want you guys to think we're forgetting you, we're not. Thanks.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. First thing, if you own a firearm, make sure you secure your firearms, don't keep them in your vehicles, make sure they're locked up in your house. Please, residents of Ward 4, join Neighborhood Watch program. We've got a very successful Neighborhood Watch program. We're getting more and more residents every day in the program, so I want to keep it that way, and they're the eyes and ears of the police. So keep the Neighborhood Watch program going. We've got a very strong Neighborhood Watch program. Also, I'd like to thank the city, the police department, everybody that was involved with the Valley of Flowers, very successful weekend, and hopefully, the weather will continue to be good, Mr. Parsons. Like I said last meeting, I'm, it was raining when I had to, when I was in charge of the weather. But, no, it was a very good weekend, and congratulations to everybody that was involved with the Valley of Flowers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Council touched on a number of things already. We have the daddy-daughter, mother-son dance at the Nature Lodge on Friday, June 2nd. That's a very memorable occasion, so you can call our, call our 921-4250 at JFK Center to make a reservation for that. Also, if you're still haven't signed up for a summer playground that goes from June 5th to July 14th, be sure and sign up for your grade school-aged children for that service. And of course, we talked about it quite a bit earlier, Mr. Jurors was here. All of the Florissant building inspectors will be deployed doing emergency water damage assessment inspections to those properties that have experienced water damage to the dwelling from the recent record-setting rains. Florissant residents that experienced water damage to a dwelling from the recent storm and have not already requested a damage inspection, please contact city engineer Tom Goldcamp at our Public Works Department to be added to the inspection list as soon as possible. Phone number for that is 839-7643. Preparations for debris removal are in the planning stage. Information and instructions will be available soon to those that are affected. I did talk personally with Governor Greitens. We were hoping to have federal assistance. We may, as bad as the storm was and as bad as the damage was, since the sewer plant down in Fenton did not get breached, we may not have quite reached the threshold to qualify for federal assistance. We're still waiting to see, but it doesn't look like it. I'm probably going to be asking the council for an emergency appropriation for us to contract with Meridian to do the debris removal, and then we'll try to get reimbursement, but there's no guarantee that we will. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. As I've said, May 15th is National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day. If you go to headquarters of the police station, stand in the lobby, you're going to see three plaques. Officer Marion Reeve lost his life serving the citizens of Florissant. Lieutenant Jay Nozer lost his life serving the citizens of Florissant. Officer Glenn Farnow lost his life serving the citizens of Florissant. Let's keep their families and their memories and our thoughts and prayers as we go through next week. Thank you.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, May 24th, 2017. Councilman Childress moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Officer Glenn Farnow lost his life serving the citizens of Florissant. Let's keep their families and their memories and our thoughts and prayers as we go through next week. Thank you.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on Monday, May 24, 2017. Councilman Childress moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
The motion is carried, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.